Call the meeting order, which order different?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two more minutes, new directions?
Move to the board.
Then a second. Any other comments? All who say aye?
Aye.
All who motion carry. Who's the agenda? You got something you want to add?
I do, Chairman, I'd like to add that a discussion on supporting Senate Bill 2192. And we can add that wherever you feel okay.
I'm going to call this a lodging tax, that's right.
Uh, yeah, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to the Lake Region Heritage Center.
What are we going to appropriate energy?
I mean, in that verbiage, I'll make that one.
Motion, you know.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who motion carry, okay. Now we'll go into the Lake Region Heritage Center, new director.
How would you mean? I'm Lisa Crowley, and I started, um, I have a heritage center on the second, so I'm just kind of really getting my feet wet right now, but a lot of things have happened. I appreciate county helping us out with what they do, and I hope to give you reports often on what's going on, and hopefully lots of fun things we're doing. Today we have the middle school ESP students there. We're going to do that monthly and do different activities every month with them. Just kind of meeting them and seeing what they're interested in today. We do have an after-school program that we're working on. We're working on getting licensed for that through Lake Social Services so that we can, if we want to grow, we can grow. We're going to keep it in the beginning, hopefully a little bit smaller so we know what we're doing, and don't get too deep in it before it grows too fast. So we're having to slow down on that a little bit, but that is our plan, hopefully within the next two to three months, have that going. And that would be once, weekly Fridays, every Friday until, and then maybe in the summer, expand it. But that's what we're starting. I'm also looking at getting the schools, the college into the building more for field trips or speech meets or things of that nature, so that the building is used by the school system and the college, reaching out to them. And also letting everyone know that that handicap ramp is in the back and getting some signage out there. Some people, well, myself included, I didn't really know how to get back there. So get some signage up there so that people are coming in using that first floor, and hopefully in the future, you know, funding for an elevator for those two beautiful other floors that we can't reach. But local nursing homes, that's my background. I've worked at Heartland Care Center, Eventide Heartland, for 16 years. So there's a whole group of people that need to get out into the community and see history. They are history, and they need to teach us more about the local heritage. And keeping the museum and exhibits going also, as well as events, but definitely keeping the museum part going.
You said you're going to start with the middle school.
Right now, it's two different programs. After-school would be us, the Heritage Center, but right now, we are partnering with the middle school ESP program, so they already have their program in place. They're just doing field trips to us once a month. And that was today, and it was fun.
And how many students, once you get the after-school program running, about how many kids are you thinking that you'll have?
We're hoping under 20, between 11 and 17 is where our goal is. And start, you know, a little smaller. We're still working on price points, what people can afford, and just asking the community what's needed and wanted and, you know, where the interest is, but also getting it licensed so that we can grow if we need to.
Anything else to add?
No, I just wanted to introduce myself and probably see you more in the future.
I have a quick question. The damage that was done by the downspouts, has that stuff been fixed in the building?
No.
Nope.
We look, we have, as far as I understand, it should be fixed before April. And the gentleman that was doing that is very busy, but I have a call-up to him tomorrow to see when, and that can be done. We want it done before our gala, April 13th. So if that can't happen, we'll be restarting the process of looking around, but I need to contact him to see when he's available.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Your luck.
Kevin?
All right. First of all, I did get an estimate for those re-lining, I covered on Ramsey 8, just south, or Ramsey 3, just south of 8. A little more money than I thought it was going to be. These are just estimates, but there's two seven-foot arch there, seven, they're 72 feet long. The cost is around $102,000, $103,000 roughly. Well, I am both. So I don't know.
About $102.
$103, yeah.
Yes, I need you to get it.
They got both, that's all of it.
That surprises you a little bit, Kevin?
Yeah, I didn't hope it was going to be that high, but then at the same time, I looked at those culverts that we replaced east of Webster on 8, those three grand, those six footers, and of course, that was a contract, and, you know, roughly the cost to replace those was $185,000 without the asphalt. Probably another $20,000 or something like that, but the asphalt wasn't that much more of it. So after I looked at those numbers, I thought, well, to replace these, we're still going to begin that $150,000 range. And then, you know, this will last 100 years. He guarantees this will last 100 years, which, you know, those culverts that are there now have been there since '72, so just under 50 years. So if we were to put metal ones back in there again, you know, they line with plastic and everything now, so they last a little bit longer, but you're probably looking at another 75 or 80 years to put metal ones back in.
But they line the inside with plastic.
Yep.
Well, you're reading water going through there then.
Yep. Yeah, it increases the flow.
It's looking up real good.
It's, uh, I'm just simply amazed at how fast that line goes through it. Don't matter how big a pipe it is, it's plastic inside.
Yep, you know, with the ribs in there, you slow it down a little, you wouldn't think so, but, and then when you get that nice smooth plastic in there, you speed it up. There's very little drop through there, so you can't imagine it speeding up too much just because there's no drop, but the flow is increased. It's not like it's going to be a gusher, you know, because the water just can't get away on the other end.
And they want to do it in the winter.
Yep. They put either, they put canvas over the ends or whatever, wood and whatever, and then they put heaters in there and melt all the water and pump the water out and start drying. Rather than work in the summer when the water's moving.
Yeah. Doesn't say they want to do it. We don't have a lot of time to decide either.
They said they'd like to do it before March, so.
Before March. Do we have a month?
So what you said the cost difference was, 103 line versus what would the other option be?
Uh, to put these ones like we did east of Webster, those three six footers, you're probably looking at $150,000.
So it's $50,000 less.
And then a little bit less for life expectancy. The only ball to throw in the air there is if they're ever going to change, if they want to add culverts to that spot there, which I don't know if that will happen, but the problem with that spot is when it goes underwater, you could have culverts for a half mile there, and it's still going to go underwater.
Like you said, the water can't get as quick. Okay, we're taxing, we're taxing cell phone.
Well, this plastic inside to culvert is going to be just huge.
It's a wave of the future. I mean, there's counties, Old Ward County is doing their whole county. It's like a $10 million project, but, yeah.
They're putting plastic in all their culverts?
Yeah.
Wow.
Do you believe in the water's going to move that much quicker?
Well, it's the longevity that they look at. They, you reduce the size a little bit, you know, you're probably putting that much plastic on both sides here. So, you know, it makes up for a little bit of downsizing, but I think grand works. That's the only way they're doing their older culverts. If they have to replace them beyond the point where they can't line them, then they're putting new ones in. But they are doing a lot of theirs with this, especially the asphalt roads, because they don't have to close the road, there's no detours, there's, it's just, you don't even know the contractor's working except for all the equipment down there.
Unless you're not interrupting any planting or harvest or anything?
Yeah.
What's the law?
You're not interrupting planting or harvest either, so if you're doing it in winter.
Sounds good to me. Got your budget?
I think I can probably guess, because this is the one that's got to be done after. This is the first time I was able to crawl through them. There's always water in them, but they're not in that bad a shape. They're starting to rust out in the bottom, and that's the first place they rust out, and then they cave in, and the whole road caves in. But the separation is on the east side on that north culvert, and that's where we're having troubles with the roads selling all the time, that separation, so.
Yeah.
Something's got to be done.
That's what we've overlaid before, and it seems like we've overlaid, and it kind of just keeps sinking.
Yeah. So I'm saying the next three, four years, either way, we're going to have to do something there. This might be a good time, you can get at it and.
He's looked at it.
I did look at it, both of them.
But the contractor's looked at it also.
Yeah.
How much, like that much plastic?
Probably.
Half inch or three quarter?
How did they put it in?
That's, he's got two different estimates. The cheaper one, but it's just a bag that he drags through there in plates, and then grouts all the way around the inside, so there's no voids for dirt or water or whatever, and then just leaves it like that. No, just like an inflatable bank. Now, there's another one here where they just spray the hole.
And that's what they're doing here?
Well, the cheap one is that way.
Oh, really?
He guarantees both ways. The other one is $108,000, but he guarantees both of them for 100 years.
100 years?
Yep.
How long has this company been in business? Just far as if you're a.
Four years?
They've been doing presentations to the MT for three or four years at least.
So is it, is it guaranteeing that the work all lasts 100 years, or that the plastic itself all lasts 100 years?
Material, yeah. But it's hard.
That's another question. They gave you 100 year guarantee, but 100 years here in three.
He carries around his trunk in his car, and you can't break it, I mean.
The hypothetical behind it is if you're putting plastic on, plastic should last doggone near forever. It's just the question of, my only question is the bonding of it. When you're bonding the plastic on, if there's some rusty metal or whatever, how long's it going to bond?
See, and this stuff appears really hard. I mean, he, he'd take a fire axe or a pickaxe, and you cannot break this stuff.
Marky?
That's what he's saying.
Where's the item?
He lives in Curtis Falls, but I think their company's out of firewood.
And they've done all of Ward County. They're going to do all of it.
They're going to do all of Ward, they're bidding it right now, yeah.
But they've got plenty of stuff out in the field that's worked just fine, so. They've done plenty of culverts.
Oh, gosh, and they did a lot for the state.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah.
Any culverts that they, around this area, they did for the state?
The giant one for Walsh, not too far from here, must have been 16 feet tall, it was a huge culvert. And they put this stuff in the bottom, they didn't haul it. This culvert's never been full of water, it's probably only been halfway full of water, so they only went a half way, but.
Was that, were they, were they, it's up on Highway 20?
Yep, they did some on.
20 North?
Yeah.
There was a bunch souths too a couple of years ago. We weren't done with the project, but it's, they put in for it.
They did some on US 2, some smaller ones, 18 inch, 24 inch on the US 2, east-west area. They're a little different process, they just pull the bank through the, and then they don't grout them quite as much, but.
Do you want to answer tonight?
We should probably let them know, yes.
How many more should we go? Go with that? Oh, my, I was just.
Your second, isn't it, Mark?
Yeah, go with the plastic over, over changing it.
Okay, a motion we got a second, take care of the calls up on County 3. Any other comments? Any other thoughts? No questions allowed to done this winter.
No, he's got another project to do in the area, so.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who motion carry. Okay.
And then I did include a letter that we send up to the townships every year, asking if they want shoulders reclaimed. We generally don't get a lot of interest from the townships, but it's an option we put out there every year. We have like, probably three or four counties that do their whole system every year, or townships that do their whole system every year, but.
Should we let the other townships know that, which ones are doing their whole system? Like Poppy Rowley said.
Popper, Rowan, Cooley, and Plankshire are the three I can think of. Like Grand Harbor does certain roads, like the ones that get a lot of traffic. They do, they don't do them all, but.
Is this with the tiller tech thing that kicks the stuff?
Yeah, and it's on the back of a tractor on three point.
Okay.
So it moves right along. He can do like five, it says here five miles in an hour on both sides.
We talked before you got here, Adam, and Kevin says that they do all the county roads, gravel.
So that'd be a good way for them to see what it looks like. I mean, I'm sure they've seen, most people have seen it already.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe just out of curiosity, maybe, you know, maybe some of the township officers aren't aware of what it is, or how exactly it works, maybe have, take a, if there's a video of it, or something, show it at the township officers meeting, and maybe that would make them go, hey, well, that looks like it might work. Maybe we catch a little more interest.
Yeah, we'll see what I can find.
Yeah, because, you know, maybe the company's got a spec video or something on there.
Yeah, I'm sure he does.
I think that'd be the time to really push it and see if we can get him to do some, you know, more miles and.
Yeah.
Every township took an hour to do it, that would help them a bunch.
Right, especially under higher traveled roads.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't, there's certain areas that won't work, like if there's a lot of grass in the swatter, it makes a mess you can't believe, but.
Burnt road ditches work the best before it starts to come back, just for.
Yeah.
You're going to dry April and May, that's the time to take into it, you know?
Yep. And then the green grass, we usually put, my green grass gets out tall, because it just makes big clods of, clods of.
Soil underneath it, and then it just doesn't work, huh?
Yeah, we could put something better for that township meeting and throw it out there and try to create a current.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All you got? New business, approve club securities. Do you need this, say the number, no, I'll, if we just.
I'll make a motion to approve the securities that we're getting in action.
Paying that motion in effect, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who motion carry. Approve the LEC December bill, announced for $63,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is there a second?
Second.
Second. You doing roll call? Roll call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Okay, next one, $6,500 for the LEC.
I'll make a motion to approve the Green Heritage Center bill.
Second.
Paying that motion in second for the $6,500 one. Roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Brown?
And then we have the LEC percentage fee payment. $183,750. Any questions there?
So this is based on the percentage of usage off of last year? So this is paying for 18, not 19, so we'll always pay a reserve. This is what we're projected to use it for, so we're paying for the coming here. So we're, it's the same as putting, like we used to put the mill in, where we're just building the pot up front, so we have some allowance. I'll make a motion to approve the percentage fee from the LEC.
Okay, second. Motion in second? Roll call.
Leipon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Okay, then we have the percentage fee of completion on the camera and the intercom system. $3,000, 312 bucks.
Of Carolina, we're on that.
We're just getting started, they've had some preliminary meetings and.
Virchum?
Virchum. And they're, they're doing it pretty well. Another outfit comes and pulls the wire. They sub it out to somebody to come and pull the wire. And Virchum's got to do a bunch of work there to start with, and then that outfit to come in, and Virchum would be kind of not there for maybe three weeks or two weeks or whatever, but they do the wire pull.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
A motion in the second, wanting to have the city get the same bill, so. Roll call.
Leipon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Okay, Bremer Insurance. That's for the whole year. For the whole year?
Increase of $5,769 from last year.
So like five?
Yeah.
We got 7%.
Yeah.
Went up, 7%?
We had a few.
We didn't want them forward and plead with us for that, or?
Few.
Had a free pencil or something?
Yeah, I want a bag or something.
Yeah, I think it was a deer here or deer there.
Or a copy, or something, come on.
Okay, move to approve. We got a motion to approve the insurance of Bremer in the year, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Just want to check out, do we still rotate insurance?
Yep, but it's, we go out five years.
Five?
How many, how many, three?
The, no, this will be their last.
Last year?
So that's, that's the normal situation, where you go five year, is there a benefit to doing it that way?
It used to be where they, they changed it every year.
I can see where that would be kind of a pain.
It was.
I mean, is it, would it be better maybe to do three or something instead of five? I don't know, I'm just curious.
I don't, I mean, I can find where it's.
You know, maybe come back a little bit.
I can find where.
I mean, I understand that it's a pain for you guys, because then you have all the new cars and all the new stuff, it has to go in the, you know, all the new documentation, I think it'd be a big pain in here like that.
Because the year they barely got through, you know, or got a handle on things, and then it switched hands again.
Well, yeah, I get that.
Years, yeah.
And that's a really reason.
It didn't, it didn't work.
Plus, you, you don't have locked-in costs, but you at least have an idea where you're going to be at for, but five years is kind of a long look.
Could be a little more competitive for three years.
Well, we could talk a little when it's time to get it for next year or something. I'm sure we'll do it in that way.
I can find a motion to where it changed.
Okay. Roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Brown?
New five-year lease for the postage machine.
Um, I got a different price, because we're, we don't need a 30-pound scale for postage machine. So we're going to go with a 15-pound scale, and that will save us like almost $20 difference.
A month?
A month. Yeah.
So it'll be like $3.60-ish, $3.60?
Um, let me see. $3.73, $3.77. And there might be some other things that. She's got some thing where we contract and we don't, we don't do that much to do the tracking. I mean, if we do send something, it's usually certified mail.
Okay, it'd be $3.82 a month, is that what it is?
$3.73.
$3.73.
$3.72?
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need a 30-pound scale.
It's only if we find something where we're saving money over when we used to pay something. I won't worry, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to go with, to go to mailing for the fact that it's your postage.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the mailing machine. Second?
Second.
And a second? Roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown? Thank you.
Yeah. I missed this lift station deal.
Uh, it'll be on the February list, the bills, I can shoot this late on your desk.
Are you sure I get this one, or what? You're not going to trust me?
I didn't do that.
I can put this under you, then? Okay, visitors and delegation.
No, we're, we're.
What did you say?
The one we added.
Senate bill.
Oh, Senate, okay.
So really briefly, some of you may have seen that a bill got introduced in the North Dakota Senate, Senate Bill 2192, which would allow for counties even without home rule to have it within their authority to exercise a lodging tax. And right now, the bill is written in such a way that it's to be used for tourism expenses. But even that, I think we would have some benefit, you know, for having that available. And I also think that taking the step to allow counties to exercise, or exercise any other form of taxation at all is a step towards diversification in the future. So both myself and, I got an email from Commissioner Frith, are in support of letting our, formally letting our delegation know that we as a county support that. And so I would make a motion that we draft a letter of support for Senate Bill 2192. I'd have that signed by the chair and sent to the three legislators. And I think it's also fairly time-sensitive, because I think that they're discussing it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, if not yet, Suzie's there.
Are they agreeing to build tomorrow?
Yes, Suzie's down there right now, she'll be doing, she'll be speaking on behalf of it as well, so.
Should we, have a figure there of what we think it should be?
As in?
As in what?
Should charge, what do you think, Paul? What's everybody else do?
Oh, well, we just, it would just allow counties to, to put one of the plates, and then we would make that decision later.
Well, I think there's, there's a maximum in state law as well.
Yeah, they're, they're not asking for an amount.
Lodging tax is set at what?
It's two, 2%. 2%, but they're not, yeah, they're not asking for an amount.
They're just trying to give counties the power, the same way that home rule could have given us the sales tax. I was sure it'd come up in the hearing.
Yeah, if, if it was approved by the Senate and the House and then gets signed a lot, we'd still have to go in front of the, you still have to have it open on if you ever wanted to do anything. But it would be, you know, you could go up to, you don't have to have it at 2% at that point, you can be 2%, you can. The only thing that I, to make a note on, I'm in support of, supporting it simply because I think it's, it's not that policy, but I think it's, the one change I would like to see in the bill is the ability to use those dollars, not just for advertising tourism, but maybe for things like funding infrastructure for tourism, like, like access and things like that, that would be useful, because we can always use more money for those things.
And I think in the future, as long as we can get this bill through, there would probably be some discussion that we could use for that.
Yeah, make some changes in that one.
Yeah, I agree. And, yeah, so that's my thought, is that it's an important first step, because as of right now, I mean, really, we have a big disturbance, so.
We'll see how it goes. We need to get this down there very soon now.
Right. And even if you could get that, you know, I know that Suzie's going to be there tomorrow speaking, is Jeff there?
No, Jeff's in Grand Forks.
Oh, okay, and I thought maybe since he wasn't here, because he's the one, he also emailed Suzie, and I thought maybe he was down there. Um, yeah, if she could even mention, I know Kyle's in big support of it, so we do have some supporters on it already. But I could just, in fact, I told her we were going, we're going to have it on the agenda, and she said, just let her know how it goes. So if I can just inform her that you're in support of it without even having let her there and just let her know, so when she speaks tomorrow to testify for it, I would let her know that the commission is in support of it.
Okay.
Roll, we'll second that. Any second now, motion? Uh, just to, just to clarify, is, do you think it would be beneficial if we did both? So that we have a formal writing for events, not as time-sensitive?
I think that would be very good, yes.
So, so in other words, uh, my motion that, that we allow Suzie to go ahead and testify on our behalf that we support it, and also that we will send a formal letter to the, the legislators, uh, that represent us.
She's down there?
She's there right now, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's all.
Really feasible, okay.
And you got a second on that?
Ready.
Any other comments? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All approved, motion carries. Only a lot of flying to visitors and delegations, anybody wanna talk to us?
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak up.
Follow on, anyone?
I didn't mean to speak up, sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Anything else you wanna add?
Um, yeah, there is one other thing, um, in the bill also, it does mention about a, a committee put together. Have you guys, have you guys read the bill?
I'd like to, I haven't read it, like.
So, um, in the bill, it does talk about a committee that the commission would put together to oversee the funds that would be coming through. And, um, so we kind of were discussing that a little bit, and I, and I won't take up your time until you guys have some time to, you know, should it pass and so forth. And, and with that, you know, we discussed that it would be a little bit of, um, very much, very similar to the tourism committee and what we already do at the chamber, and the, you know, so we were looking at it thinking, why would you want to, you know, do the same type of thing? And if you wanted, it does say in here that the Board of County Commissioners could, um, cons- have a consolation or contract to a person, firm, association, or corporation, which we were kind of thinking you at that point would do it with the chamber. And then we would just take that over, and if you wanted to have a representative sit on the board at that point, uh, but that would make the most sense, instead of duplicating it at that.
I agree.
Yeah, I would, and I would assume that, that the language in the bill is structured the same way as the language in the lodging tax bill for cities.
Exactly, yes.
So, it would, just like the city contracts with the chamber now.
Same way. Yes, the same way, that's just how we felt you would probably.
Who's that chamber there?
Suzie?
Jeff?
Jeff's the chamber, correct?
Yes, he's our, yeah, so it would be, yeah, exactly, so we would just run the same.
Something I think that, I guess that would be, I thought.
Okay, and that's what we were looking at, too, and that seemed like it would make the most sense.
Yeah, I don't think we would need another, maybe then, obviously, that.
Okay.
Not even for anyone.
Right, that's what we thought, so that was, that was the only other thing we saw in the bill that would make the most sense.
We'll see how it goes, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Nothing else from visitors? Okay, announcements, we're really good on all the law enforcement centers, the closure and the, uh, non-compliance orders were lifted. Yes, true, here, here.
Congratulations.
Let me say, I worried right from working here this morning, you called me, and passed it on to Rob out there, and so, we were, it's really happy to have that done, so.
Well, thank you guys for all your efforts, and I was gonna say a big thank you to you and Mark, as well as Rob, for all the work, and, and the staff.
Yeah, it's too bad Rob wasn't here, so we could.
Well, he wanted more, he asked if I needed him for the bill, and I said, ah, it will be all right, so I didn't wanna take up another evening on this side, so.
Well, you guys thanks enough.
I'll thank him, but in the morning, you gotta.
You don't have to cook our meat, you're all.
I'll, uh, I'll know that.
You got a meeting tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Good deal.
So I'll thank him then, so, but we're very happy with that findings and all that, so I think we'll, should be all right.
Very good.
Very good, that's the announcements, I have, anybody else got announcements?
I'll just make one mention, two mentions. I'll want to mention for sure, I don't know if you guys have been reading the legislative stuff that's coming out from the Association of Townies, but I don't remember if it was yesterday or today, um, the initial hearing on the Social Services redesigned bill, or, um, starts in the Senate side, I believe. They had multiple people from the association, directors as well as county commissioners, uh, speak to it, and the association as a whole is in favor of it, but with some changes, and the changes are very similar to what we've talked about in our Social Services Board meetings, where there's concerns about, uh, local control and autonomy from the board, um, how can a state employee who's the zone director direct county employees? Uh, and, uh, and the speed with which they're gonna wanna try to get this done. Basically, the three big questions, and we've talked about all those at the Social Services Board meetings, so.
We did.
So, just a heads up, they had the initial hearing, um, they didn't say really how it went, other than they didn't, uh, we're, we're speaking in favor of it, but they're gonna try to draft some changes in there to try to make it a little more functional, so.
You don't know if Rhonda was there or not?
I believe she might have been.
It might've been yesterday.
Yeah, I think it was yesterday, 'cause I called, tried to call her yesterday, and she wasn't here in the office, so I'm guessing she was down there, I was thinking, well, going down, but I could, I might talk on stuff to do.
Well, that's good, we're gonna stay on top of that and get it to where we want, 'cause, you know, once the state gets in there and starts throwing their weight around, they're really hard to stop. We gotta make sure legislators know how we want it all, so.
Yeah, and there's a, you know, decent sized fiscal load on it, it's a hundred and eighty-two point currently in there, so we gotta make sure we get it right. The only other thing I would mention is, um, uh, everyone cross your fingers and hope that the government shutdown stops at some point. The, uh, County Housing Authority, we run through HUD on the section eight side of things, and HUD is shut down. So, uh, we think we're gonna get funding for next month, but the month after, we might have to find a way to make the money locally, so we can keep people in their apartments, so, and we think we've got a plan, but we talked about it a little bit at our last meeting, so. So let's hope we can stop.
Any other announcements, Mark, or Lucas?
I actually, no.
We're adjourned.